David, either you or Hans could actually speak to your meeting or, you know, bring everybody up to date on your meeting with Georgia State so we can talk about that.
Yeah, you bet. Hans, do you want to do that or you want me to?
Sure, sure. I'll take it. We had a conversation with the researchers who are going to look at it. We talked through a couple of different, just so that everybody's level set on where we are. We actually have from the digest, all like everybody that lives in Decatur, all of the known addresses and all of the appraised values of all of the homes. And we also have all of who has taken all the various exemptions, including the most recent exemption. What we don't have is the specific age of everyone other than, did they qualify for an exemption over age 65 and did they qualify for an exemption over the age of 70? And we did not have income information for everyone. So we talked through the age, the age issue is actually fairly straightforward to, to correct. Getting reasonably good estimates of ages is not particularly difficult. Getting good estimates of income is somewhat difficult, especially for individuals that are in retirement. And so we talked through a couple of different ways to go about doing that. And in their proposal, they put forward the approach that they wanted to take, which I think will be sufficient for the analysis that we need to do. I say that with the full caveat that it also always depends on what they bring to us. But I think that they have, they've thought through the problem. They're aware of where all the issues are. They have a couple of good sources to go after. And their approach for bounding it seems sound. So I think we're going to be able to get the information that we want. And they fully understood what we're trying to do with the analysis, with the two different buckets. And, you know, rough estimates of what the numbers ought to be for either bucket, but with some flexibility depending on, you know, if it comes back and one is more expensive than we anticipated or one is less, with some flexibility to be able to allow us to do an iteration or two to get to our final final.
And when, when do they hope to get, or when have they indicated that they could get back to us for the first cut?
I would need to pull their email up to get it. David, do you remember off the top of your head?
Don't off the top of my head, but they need some data for a must like what Hans was just talking about. And then they're going to get going on it. They know that we need to have the data no later than the October 13th board meeting and they're ready to do that.
And that's really my question is, are we going to have it in time to have, you know, two iterations so that we have a proposal by the meeting? Or is it going to be the first cut data by the meeting? Do we know?
It'll probably be, it will most likely be first cut data by the meeting unless they happen to get ahead of it. And Hans and I have a chance to refocus to a second version if needed.
Okay.
In terms of, in terms of providing the, the, I would expect that the first cut would get us to rounding error buckets that we can be comfortable, you know what I mean? Like in terms of, if we're going to, in other words, I don't know on that first cut of somebody says, hey, if I'm 68 and I'm at this income and this is my home value and this, will we be able to run the numbers on precisely what the impact will be to that individual? Probably not in the first cut. But if we're able to say, these are the two buckets, these are the dollar amounts in the two buckets. And these are the cutoffs that we expect around those two buckets will be awfully close, I would expect in that first pass.
Okay. Questions, anybody?
Yeah, I just, I need some help understanding what happens in the two exemptions when someone turns 70. And just understanding what, like, how are we making sure that we're not exceeding our budget in total now that we have two exemptions? It's like we have to do two calculations, right? So we still have one for the 65 to 69 year olds. That's not to exceed the 1.2 million. And then anything left over is supposed to be allocated toward the age 70 plus? Is that right?
That's the, I mean, that's the general thinking, but the way to think about it is that we want to ensure it's, no, no. I mean, it was about three point, I don't recall, 3.2 million, sounds right. About 3.2 million for the 70 and over bucket. And so part of why the analysis frankly, in this case is needed is because to the best of our ability with the data that we have, we think that is going to more than cover everyone. But we recognize also the limits in the data that we have. And so when they run that analysis, if that analysis comes back for that 70 and older bucket and says, yeah, in order to offer us the 70 and over, you know, it's, it's 3.8 million. It's not 3.2 million, then we're going to have to put some limits on that 70 and above as well. We'll put a home value or income level limits there. And to get it bounded back down to the 3.2 that we're anticipating.
Okay. And are we, are all the other exemptions staying on the books? Just that these supersede and value some of the ones that are existing? And then I don't have it in front of me right now, but like when they get to a certain age, what is it? 80, like they pay no taxes at all? Like I just wondered, all the other exemptions basically except for this one, that sun setting, just kind of stay on the books, but they just might not be relevant.
You know, it's a, it's a really good question, Heather, and I don't know that we had thought through that in sufficient detail. What exemptions, I need to pull up the list of school exemptions that are in front of us. But if there is a 65 and above exemption that applies to everyone, regardless of income or home value, then no, we're going to need to pull that back. That actually would end up interrupting. Or we would have to then run the calculation of what that value is and subtract it out of the 1.2 for the 65 to 70 that we're anticipating.
Yeah.
This is, this is 62, but it's income limited. And, and not, not, and it's not the value, it's either, I think it's income limited and.
I can fill you, I can fill you in.
If we could just pull that up, I've looked at it a million times. I just don't, I'm looking for mine right now. But maybe we could walk through that together because I think, I just want to think through that. Cause obviously you calculated what that total 4.3 million was supposed to be the total of all of the senior exemptions that exist. So this one is going to, let's look together and see like this one is going to make most of them irrelevant. But there might still be one on the books when you get to a certain age where you do get the full exemption, if I recall correctly.
I've got that here. Sorry, my internet connection went unstable. So I'm not sure if you heard me or if I talked over people, but the S3 exemption is for residents 70 or older and it's $50,000. So I think that's probably what you're referring to, Heather.
Yeah, okay. On my paper, I just wish we could pull it up somehow for all to see.
If somebody lets me share a screen, I can put it up right now.
Yeah, that would be great because I just want to make sure that we are calculating for these two exemptions that we're proposing and any remaining exemption that would still be relevant and including that in the total cost. So that we know what the total cost is.
That's a good point, right? And it's very important because I'm, I still can't share a screen, but I'm going to go ahead and.
I can't figure out how to let you share a screen. I'm sorry, Hans.
That's all right. So we have a GS1 exemption, general and school one. It's for anyone 62 or older. The income is limited to $25,000 a year. That's of the household. So everyone combined.
Right.
And it's a $50,000 exemption. So that is not going to be a particularly expensive exemption just because it's so massively income limited, right? 25,000 is, is really low.
Right.
With that, but we do need to run and understand what that cost is going to be.
Right.
The S1 is everyone 62 or older. And income at the house can't exceed $10,000 excluding retirement. It's $10,000. It's, and its exemption value is $10,000. That also would have to be a part of what we're assuming is in that bucket.
Right.
There is the S2, which is for 80 or older and your income can't exceed $40,000. The S2 and the S3, which with Dr. Duddy just mentioned, which is 70 and older, the combination of those two almost certainly will just be fully wiped out by what's in the 70 plus bucket, right? So those are probably not incremental costs. And then of course, the S4 is what we're talking about expiring. But that S1 and S2 exemption, I think we do need to make sure that we're very clear on what that is actually costing us and, and.
And what, and why wouldn't S2, so they, I'm just, I need to think with you out loud here. But yes, I agree, the GS, if you're 62, there are two that could apply. So those would be in addition to the ones that we are proposing that start at 65. And then the S2, where if you're 80 and your income doesn't exceed 40,000, you're exempt for all. That could be an additional expense because the two that we're proposing will probably have limitations. Income or home value, if we did that, or exemption amount or.
It's, it is, I should, the honest answer is that it is possible that the, that that S2 will. I think that it is unlikely. I think the bucket that we.
Yeah, but if you're 80, you would be exempt from all, everything.
I understand, but you might also be exempt from all if you're 70 and above, based on what we're proposing here.
So we need to see.
Correct.
Because there's, if, like, if we propose, if our second exemption for 70 and above has an income limit, that is not the same as.
Then that would be incremental.
Yeah, so we just need to, that one's kind of TBD depending on exactly what comes back from the analysis and what the recommendations are. This may or may not be an incremental cost. And then let's look at S3 again. If you're 70, school S3 exemption must reside at property and must be 70. No income limit, but only up to $50,000 in assessed home value.
Now, what's important there is that also might be incremental for the people that end up at an income level that is above any constraint that we put on it, right?
Right.
And so that would have to also be included.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, and then the S4, that's the one that's going away. So I guess my, my thinking is just that, that 4.3 million level that we are assuming to be our budget for these two proposed recommendations needs to be reduced by what we think the residual cost will be for the GS1, S1, S2, and S3.
Correct. Yes. And that'll be the iterative analysis that we're talking about with Georgia State. But that's not, it should not be particularly difficult to do. And I, and I also fairly comfortable that these are going to be relatively small numbers that we're talking about pulling back out of it, right? Those are, those aren't going to be enormous buckets of money. But you're 100% correct. When, when we get the Georgia State numbers back and we determine what those limits are, we're going to have to pull, we're going to have to pull some of that out.
So can we, do we need their help now to, to help us determine what those incremental costs will be so that they can return that value with the value they're calculating of what the two will cost? Because they're dependent on one another. And I don't, I guess I'm not understanding where else we're going to get that data.
Well, that data actually exists in the digest information already, right? So we, we know, we know what exemptions people took for each household. We know what it cost 2012 to 2016. It gets a little fuzzy after 2016 since people started switching over to the S4. But, but we, we actually can probably estimate within a pretty narrow band what those, what those costs would be now.
You totally, but Hans, with the, with the data you already have, I just pulled up the email that went out a long time ago, sorry, early June, where Chris Grimes had, had noted all the years and each of the exemptions and the numbers. And this went to all the committee a long time ago. But in 27, I'm going to give you one example. In 2016, the GS1, there were 348 households claiming that. In 2017, when the S4 went into effect, there were only 38. We're not talking about big numbers here at all.
So I like to hear you say that. I just, until I see the numbers, I can't feel really comfortable knowing, knowing that for sure. But I'd like to hear you say that. And it's, it's good to know that we know how much we're spending on those now. My question is, once we get the recommendation back from GSU as to what the new exemptions will be, will we be able to calculate the incremental difference? Will we know how much, or I guess I should say, will we know how many of the people who are currently taking these exemptions will now fall into the two new exemptions bucket? And therefore will we be able to calculate the residual? That's the part that I'm not sure.
So actually the way that we'd have to run that calculation, the people that are currently taking those exemptions are not representative of what will happen in the future state. Because so many people just went ahead and took the S4. It's a much better exemption. That's, that's actually part of the, the problem that we, we had with the underestimate, right? And so what we'll have to do, just to be conservative, fiscally conservative, is we'll have to assume everyone that qualifies for these exemptions, even if they're not taking it now because they have the S4, will choose to take the exemption that they can take. So the 320 households that were taking the GS1 that the Paula just referenced, we'll just assume that everyone that's 62 or above that isn't already getting a better exemption will go ahead and take that exemption and we will be able to calculate the estimate on the digest. Now, it may be that not every one of those people do take it, right? And so we, we should be providing you an overestimate of that cost in that case, not, not an under.
Yeah. It makes sense. I'm just, I'm just struggling with what we're going to get back from Georgia State, which is going to be recommending the, I guess, the, the income cap for ages 65 to 69 together with an exemption value for that same bucket. Is that right? Are they going to give us a scenario? Are they running their cost based on a particular scenario? Because I don't, right now it's still very general, like we have, we have a recommendation saying there will be an income limit, there will be an age limit. Or not an age, there will be an income limit and there will be an exemption value limit for age 65 to 69. Are they going to come back to us and give us a recommendation for what income level and exemption value that should be?
I think we, we are doing that. So they're going to give us the analysis that says, look, if, if everyone above age 70 gets it, it's going to cost you 4.6 million. At which point we'll say, can't, or whatever, 3.6 million. At which point we'll say, oh, we can't afford that. What if we put $100,000 income limit in it and what does that do? And they'll come back and say, that cost you 4.1 or 3.1 million. So it does fit, right? Like we'll have, that's the iteration that I'm talking about that we couldn't do with the tool that we have to do in order to arrive at what these limits are, in order to put the structure together. So I fully expect that it's going to come back with the analysis on what the costs are with the ideal state, which is what we've described in the last meeting, where you don't have anything on that 70 plus. Like basically the S4 exemption is retained for those that are 70 and above. And if we're capable of fitting in that bucket minus the exemptions that you're mentioning today and minus the cost of the exemption for the 65 to 69, we're sorted. That's going to be it. If we can't and it doesn't fit and we need to peel it back a little bit, then we'll have to add some of these limits into it that we're describing right here. And so the reason why it's a little fuzzy is because we don't know what those are, because we don't know how much it's going to cost. That's the, the exercise that we have to go through.
Right? Just add real quickly because I, I think that we've talked around it, but maybe not said it exactly. And that is the point that I'm so glad has been raised, that the new exemption for ages 65 to 69 would be in addition to the GS1 and the S1 even for people in that same age range and not, most likely not in lieu of. So I, I think that's a really good point that I don't, I don't think that we as a committee had really considered previously. But, um, you know, those existing exemptions, I believe would probably have to be repealed by referendum to go away. So they're still going to be there. So, you know, for somebody who is 62 or say they're 65 and they make $25,000 a year in income, you know, they would still be able to get that $50,000 exemption plus whatever new exemption for people ages 65 to 69. So I'm, that's just something, I, again, I don't think that we as a committee had touched on that so much. But that we, we've kind of treated in our calculations that those exemptions weren't part of the picture with respect to the existing 100% exemption for people ages 65 and over, because the current exemption basically eclipsed them for that age group. But when the 100% exemption goes away, then Heather's right, those exemptions are going to come back into play and would likely be in addition to whatever new thing we put in place. That anything short of a 100% exemption, these things would be in addition to it.
Assuming the, the limits, the income limits and the amounts that we provide based on those income limits doesn't also eclipse those two exemptions, right? So we could see a scenario where we say, income limit is capped at $25,000, right? Which, which is in the case of both of those exemptions already. It's, it's, nobody is getting those exemptions above a $25,000 income limit. If we say, for example, that the value of the exemption can go up to $100,000. I mean, I'm just making up numbers. I don't know what that comes to. But if we say it goes up to $100,000, then it automatically is going to be more than and encompass more than either of those two previous exemptions. So it would, in fact, in that case be incremental. It wouldn't be.
I think it would be in addition to, I think that if you had a, the age 60, the existing age 62 exemption for, with a $25,000 income cap for a 15, a $50,000 exemption. And then you had another one for ages 65 to 69 with all the same $25,000 income cap for $100,000 exemption. I think that it would be in addition to. And so that those people ages 65 to 69 would end up with $150,000 exemption. Because unless you get rid of the existing one, but I think you would have to have local legislation to call for the repeal of that and then put it before the voters in a referendum. So I, I mean, I just think that's something that maybe we need clarification on it, but it's definitely something to be aware of.
That seems right to me, Gwen. I wonder if we could write legislation to make it. It would be in addition to, to the extent, you know, you claim GS1, it's capped, you know, at $50,000. And so if somebody otherwise would have had, you know, they're paying more, well, that's a, that'd be a large cap, wouldn't it?
That's off the appraised value of the home, right? So it's, it's, we're basically saying.
I was getting confused, right?
You could do either, but yeah, I mean, that's usually that way.
But I agree that if we didn't do something with the legislation, it's going to be one plus the other. I wonder if we could write the legislation for whatever we're proposing. So that it would be not that way, but that would get a little complicated maybe.
I might be able to.
I'm honestly unsure. And I mean, the, the chart that I'm looking at only just says amount. It doesn't even specify how, like what that amount is. My assumption all along was that it was, that we were exempting the home's assessed value for the first $50,000.
That is, that is, yes.
And so I don't know both Gwen and Hans, which of your takes on that is correct? I think we do need clarification on that because it's a big difference. Either we're exempting up to $50,000. And then let's just say that our new exemption exempts up to the first $100,000. We're either in that case exempting up to the higher of the two or adding the two. And that's a big difference. So.
Well, I think it depends on how the legislation is written. I mean, I think normally it would be written so that you would stack them. You may be able to write it to say that you get this one if you're not getting the other one.
Or net of whatever that you'd maybe, yeah.
Yeah, it might be, you know, that people who are 65 to 69 can in lieu of the GS1, get this new thing, but you would have to craft it to, to specify that.
Man, I believe this Bill Floyd, I'm almost 100% sure that you can write that legislation where if you, if you apply for this one, you can't apply for GS1.
Okay.
As simple as that, I think.
Okay. So that's one way we could write it to, to let people basically take the GS1 and S1 when they turn 62, but then basically graduate to this new exemption when they turn 65, right?
Yes, we'd still have to, in that case, subtract the cost of that exemption.
True.
The buckets that we give them, but you're, yes.
True. And then the opposite might be true when people turn 70 and then 80. They might not let these two new ones go because they might be more valuable. But would they, I guess, graduate to the S2 and the S3?
I'm wondering if in the interest of time, we, we should move on. I think that we, we get, we understand the point, which is that we're going to have to figure out which of these are additive and, and which are not. We're going to have to make sure and just ask, somehow we need to confirm, and maybe we could have a follow up with GSU, that the information they're going to provide to us is what we're looking for, which is the incremental impact of the, these two senior exemptions in excess of any other exemption. So what's the real budget impact of these two senior exemptions? But I'm, I mean, do you think that it's going to profitable to keep talking about that now? Or should we just sort of clarify with GSU?
Let's talk about, if we, if we could, I agree, we can pause the conversation. But what are the action steps and who's responsible for getting this information? Just so that it's clear how it's going to be answered and that we do get an answer. Because without these answers, we won't be able to quantify the cost.
So I'm going to suggest this if we can, Dr. Duddy. I'd like us to have the conversation with GSU. I know they sent us the cost number and referenced the analysis that they were going to do. I'd be a lot more comfortable if they drafted us a proposal on precisely what the analysis was that they're going to do so that we can go through it line by line and say, yes, this, not that, yes, this, not that. Here's three other things that the board brought up that you also need to take a look at. And, and just so that we have something we can, otherwise I get worried that they send us analysis and say, well, we gave you what you wanted, but we don't have anything to kind of push back on and say this needs to be.
Oh, I think that's a great idea. Let's do that for sure.
So, so what is the step then? So is, are you?
Hans and I can, can take care of that piece if that's what you're asking, sorry.
And since Dr. Duddy, without, I mean, I would love to take responsibility for it, but since it is your check that will be paying them, maybe, maybe that that directive comes from you.
Yeah, absolutely. I think I'll probably do set up another call so we can talk to them about exactly what we want in writing. And you can, you and I can look through what they provide to make sure it fits that need.
And I would emphasize speed of delivery.
Exactly, exactly.
One last note, I'd like to point out that in 2019, if you look at these exemptions, there were 25 households that took the GS1, 28 that took the S1, five that took the S2, and 18 who took the S3. We are talking about a minuscule number of households compared to 1,405 in 2019, taking the S4. So we are, I appreciate, I'm, I'm all about, I want to make sure we capture all the buckets and we get the right answer. But this is, this is not budget dust, but it's close.
No, but so where I'm going to push back on that, Paula, I'm sorry. But where I am going to push back on that is that, that, that is because people got an S4 that exempted everything. Like the minute we take that away and start making people pay, they're going to push back and go add what they didn't have before. So I would expect that those exemptions, we should go back at 2016 and see what those exemption costs before S4 was in place, because that's probably a better estimate of what their impact is.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for that. And is there any way, I guess, I want to talk again about the timeline because I'm concerned about just kind of raw data landing in our laps on October 13th, when we're supposed to have a board meeting discussion on. board meeting discussion on what this means and where we go with it. I just wonder if there's any way to iterate and get something from, ask Georgia State to get at least a draft or an iteration to you, Hans, and the committee sometime before then, so you have some time to digest it and, and react to it and, and even know whether you're getting what you needed. And, you know, just, I, I'm just proposing maybe just touching base with them at some point between now and then.
Try. I think October thirteenth was kind of pushing it probably. But we can, we can certainly try to do that. At a minimum, I think, making sure we clearly define in writing the end product we're expecting and help with that a little bit. But we'll, we'll push on as, as much as we can. But October thirteenth was kind of pushing to begin.
The other point to make, I think, Heather, is that, and that's sort of the, the need to talk about the public involvement plan, the timeline altogether. And so we're going to need some meetings and, and some events to discuss this, and they don't all need to be, and maybe shouldn't primarily be the board meeting. You know, board meetings are long. We have a lot of stuff, you know, other stuff to do, and they're boring. And so we might need to have a special meeting, a listening session, or something related to that. That's one of the things that, that we can talk about. So even if we can't hit, I mean, it would be ideal to have a crystallized proposal for the thirteenth. But if we don't, we, we just need to be ready to, to be scheduling meetings when we've got, you know, what we need in hand. So I think we can, we can just talk further about that. Like now, so maybe we should talk further about it. But before we do, though, before we move to the, to the schedule, there's one other point that I wanted to, to make. There was a note in the slide presentation about the desire to not have to take this back to the General Assembly in 2025. Whereas on the one hand, I think everyone recognizes that we need some sort of a, you know, stopgap. It would be desirable if we didn't have to actually get by the side of approval. I don't think that's possible because of the constitutional process for, for establishing a homestead exemption. Gwen, I'm curious whether you think there might be a possibility, but if there's not, I would suggest we just put it out of our mind and move on.
I agree with you. I mean, I think that even if there were a way to draft the legislation to, to say that the school board could change it in the future or something, that the, it probably is not politically feasible. I, I don't even know that it's, I, I'm not sure if it's legally feasible, but I have real concerns about it being politically feasible.
I would suggest we drop the idea, just because I don't, I don't, I don't see a path for it, and it's complicating. As nice as it would be. The other proposal that y'all had, which is that that if, if we have an income limit, that it be indexed to AGI, that seems both right and simple. I don't see any, any, any problems there. There must be other exemptions that are written that way, and if they're not, they should be, but that seems simple enough.
The other index that we talked about was a home value index as well. So if we take an exemption amount, like whatever, fifty thousand dollars, or, you know, whatever the number is that is off the appraised value, that number should grow in relation to some index as well. And I, I, we've been sort of intentionally cagey about defining what that index is, but we, we're coming up at a point where we probably need to select what index we would prefer that to be.
If, if I'm not mistaken, I think the city of Columbus and by this point, other cities have indexed exemptions like that, that were somehow or another designed to, you know, to, to backdoor in sort of a reward for tenure, that, as a property value freeze. And I think they got to a property value freeze through some kind of an index. I'm not sure. I don't have the details, but I think there are models for that that we can look to.
And that, it's important to remember, we're, we're building in a five-year sunset on this, and so we will revisit this again. And it's still new. You know, we've only had this for not even five years now. And, you know, behaviors and communities change, and so I also feel like I'm channeling Bill Floyd a lot when he keeps saying, keep it simple, keep it simple. Because I think that's important to not feel like we need to over complicate this with, you know, indices and this and that, because we're going to be revisiting it in probably three years. And start, and this time, I think we're going to know a whole lot more. We're also going to have a process for reassessing it. And we will be able to tweak it, and we don't know yet whether we're going to hit the target just exactly right, but if we're over or under, we will be able to tweak it. And so without having to build in all these indices, it's not like we're voting on this and it's going to, and it's staying on the books forever, like all these other ones did. This one's going to be revisited at this point in three years.
Well, and, and so to the extent that you guys want this to cost a certain amount at the end of the next five-year window as opposed to it changing at the beginning, I think that's probably, I mean, that would certainly, not indexing it would be a more conservative result. Meaning it would not cost you as much. That's the way to say it.
Yeah.
That's, that's good. I think that's an important point. The five-year point means that we might be able to keep this simple, which probably is preferable.
So are we talking about a, a sunset on both pieces then, on the sixty-five to sixty-nine piece and the seventy-plus piece?
I, that had been my assumption. If, if one of those two, if, if one of those two, depending on how expensive the sixty-five to seventy, if it's a pretty strictly income limited exemption, it, it's possible that, that we could consider changing that. But my assumption was that both would be sunset.
No, I think, I, I think it's a good idea. I just want to make sure. I'm writing the report, so I want to make sure that I have the details in there.
I have another question before we move to the other thing, which is that the, the general preference, as I understand it, is for income limits rather than, and I think of them as value limits, which, you know, you can just say that you're going to get this exemption and it, it's going to be a reduction in your property taxes up to some limit. Now, you're going to get up to twenty thousand dollars in tax relief or up to ten thousand dollars in tax relief or whatever. You can back into it by figuring out putting the assessed value limit on the house, but or the, the, the cap on the value of the, the exemption. But that's one way. And that it is an income limit. I understand y'all prefer the income limit, and I thought we might just talk about that until I go into my.
Well, I think particularly on the sixty-five to sixty-nine, when we talk about a needs-based, strictly needs-based, income is better reflective than home value in that case. And there was some, some desire to preserve the needs-based component of sixty-five to sixty-nine. I, I do actually think in the sixty, the seventy and above, especially since the goal there is to try to preserve as much of the current S four as possible. If we do a home value and we just exempt a very large number of appraised value, if we say the first five hundred thousand dollars of value on your home is exempt, that more or less absolutely preserves for everyone that is in the sixty-five to sixty-nine category. And it actually takes a substantial portion of those taxes down. I mean, I honestly think it could go higher than five hundred and still keep within that, that bucket that we've put there. But that would be a way to achieve what you're describing, Louis, where, where
That's the kind of structure that, that would, that would be my, that's where I would start.
It gets easy. It's certainly a lot easier to implement for that seventy and above, right? I, I think that in, in the philosophy of keeping it simple, I think that that is a good approach.
And, and when, with the GSU numbers, we're going to have the ability to ask them about, I mean, if we could exempt, you know, the first five hundred thousand dollars of your assessed value, you know, that'd be a large exemption that would make a lot of people happy. Is, is that the kind of numbers that we're talking about? Is that within the realm?
Of assessed or appraised?
I assume that was
I thought it was
probably appraised, or is it assessed?
It's, it's assessed.
Hans said assessed, but whatever.
Yeah.
There's assessed, but then there's also the taxable value is the fifty percent of the assessed. So we would want to be clear on that, I think.
Well, I think we should follow what was, the way that it was defined in the GSU report. And I'm going to look back again at that, because we have been using that as our value. I'm going to pull it up real quick, but
Just, just to, let's clarify everybody on terms here really quickly. The appraised value of the home is the value that the county determines the home is worth. The assessed value of the home is the fifty percent that gets taxed. And so the exemptions are coming off of the assessed value of your home, if I'm not mistaken. Now, somebody keep me honest on that, but I'm pretty sure that it's off the taxable portion of your home.
When you said that we could do a five hundred thousand dollars off the assessed value, first off, is that what you said?
Yes. I, so that basically means that, so for example, if we were wanting to continue the S four as it is right now, with no change in the impact to people that are seventy and above, the exemption amount that you would put in there would be on the order of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because one and a half million dollars starts to be the peak value of homes in Decatur in that, in that contingent.
And that's, that's appraised value, not assessed. And that's why we, when we keep flipping back and forth with these is why it gets confusing.
Yeah.
It is confusing.
Yeah, it, it's, it's confusing. But I also want to be clear, Louis, I am not saying that that would necessarily, I do need to see
You threw that out as an example. I understand that. You weren't, I, I understand. I, so that answers my question. We can keep talking about it, but we've got forty-five minutes left, and I'm, would suggest we might start talking about the public involvement piece. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and, and, and this, this is tricky, because, you know, generally, I think to have a successful public involvement strategy, we'd be reaching out in time that people, well, to get input, to shape our proposals, and in time for people to realize that we had time to consider what they're going to tell us, to consider what we learned. That's going to be difficult to achieve, but I just think we have to do it. And so I would suggest, or at least I've been thinking and wanted to throw out for consideration, that we do a community-wide survey, that we contact the city and get some, their help distributing a survey. I think we would have to do it online. But we could try to talk about how to, how to reach as many people online as possible. To ask questions about what we're doing. I mean, and I started looking at questions that could be asked. And by the way, I think that another value or benefit of doing a survey is that you can also take the opportunity to, to educate people about what we're doing. And so if we could update the Q and A document, which was really directed at you guys, we could update it so that it's in some form that's directed at the, the community. In very basic terms, this is what we're doing. These are the budget limits. This is why we're doing it. This is assessed value, you know, all the rest of it. But then ask some questions. And the ones that occurred to me is, number one, ask them if they've read the Q and A as a prompt to get them to do so before they answer the questions. But then number two, talk about cost or value-based exemptions versus income exemptions. Which do you prefer? Which do you think is more fair, just in general terms? Number two, we can describe this basic proposal and ask, you know, do you like it? Can strongly agree, strongly disagree, you know, whatever it is. Number three, assuming that we're going to run with this two-tier exemption, how should the seventy and over exemption be limited? Should it be an income limit based on some percentage of AGI? Or should it be a value exemption based on, you know, the first X dollars of your assessed value? If it's going to be an income limit, what should the income cap be? And then the same series of questions for the sixty-five to sixty-nine exemption. Should it be one or should it be the other? What should the values be? Those are just my, those are the ones that came to me. They're kind of obvious questions, but what do y'all think about? And, and if we did this, as, as we've learned, you know, it's very important in the beginning to explain to people why you're reaching out to them. It's not a vote. We're not taking a referendum. We're looking for input so that we can get, you know, a, a sense of what's important to whom and, and et cetera. But nonetheless, go ahead and reach out and do something like that in the very short term. I mean, probably before we have the GSU tools back, we'd ask the questions in a way that, that didn't commit us to specific numbers. It's a good idea. I don't, I'm not going to hurt my feelings if we decide it's a bad idea, but I thought I'd throw it out there.
Have you guys done surveys like this with the community? Asking these, like, kind of tax-based sort of questions before?
No, we've never done that. We, we've, in fact, we've never done a community-wide survey that I know of. David might
Yeah, I, I was going to say, this is different than anything we've done, because we typically are surveying our stakeholders that we know how to contact and know how to get stuff to. Whereas this really needs to be so much more broad than that, which is why I'm, I'm hopeful the city can help with getting the word out.
My, my experience with, with public surveys of information is if you're asking people to calculate in their heads what they think rates should be and number, like, you're just, you're not going to get good information back. Like, that's, most, most people don't think that way. And, and even if they do provide it, it's not necessarily tethered to something that you could actually take action on. The survey, if anything, simpler and clearer is, is, is better, I, I think. I mean, that's been my experience with public surveys like this.
And the 2018 National Citizen Survey, you know, the city does, they participate in that program every other year and have for many years. And in the 2018 one, we tacked on five affordable housing questions. And to sort of echo what Hans is saying, we definitely had an uneducated answer set. So I'll leave it at that, but it, it was interesting and, and it was pretty clear that, that some of the answers were not tied to anything in reality, but when you, money is very different to different people in our city. And so I, I, I hear you, Louis, and I, I would, I would very much like to have ways to engage people, but I think that asking them to weigh in on something that maybe they, they've not been a student of, if you will, then I don't know, I don't know what we're going to get back.
I
I mean, go ahead, sorry, Louis.
I'm, I'm happy to drop that idea, the, if, if it's a bad one. And I guess there's two questions that I'd have. And the first is whether my interest is actually in doing a survey. It's not really, and, in other words, what I want is to have community engagement. I want people in the community who've been, had an interest in this committee and, and the tax to feel that, that we've sought their input and that we have made an effort to get it. And then I'm genuinely interested in trying to accommodate as many people as we can. So I don't want to say that this is a performance. But I think for people to accept the results of what we do, the more that we can give them a sense of buy-in to the result, the better. And so if a survey doesn't have that result, we can talk about, you know, the other, other thing that, and we can go back to it, you know, so keep, you know, the question would be, is there a survey that could achieve that goal, that could provide valuable information, even if it didn't ask for specific thresholds and limits?
Let, let me frame a question. This would be an interesting answer from the community, and I think it's simply phrased enough to, to provide value. Right? We, we can start with a very clear statement that we can't continue with where we are now. We've got to make a change, right? So that's not on the table. What we would like to know from the community is if we do have five million dollars, say, would you rather people that are seventy and above get almost all of what they currently have now in terms of total exemption? And we just have a much smaller number for people that are sixty-five to sixty-nine? Or would you rather see it split amongst everybody evenly? It would be a kind of an interesting thing to see, and I think people can think about that. You know, what I suspect is you're going to get a lot of people at sixty-five to sixty-nine to say, no, I want that thing split. And you're going to get a lot of people seventy and above that says, no, I think it's great to give it to everybody that's seventy. But that's, you know, you're starting to get the community to, to grapple with the kinds of decisions that are facing us without really giving them numbers to play with.
I think that that would be an interesting thing to do. And right. So I think that that, personally, I think that that'd be worthwhile.
I agree with, I agree with that. I think it's an opportunity to educate and engage. I like the more qualitative question framing it, like, would you, to help understand where the community's values lie? Like, because we really already know that there are very few levers we have to pull. We have the assessed value exemption amount, we have age, and we have income limits. Those are the, you know, the basic things we're working with. So what's more important to give So what's more important to give a bigger exemption to a smaller population of older people? Or like Hans was saying, spread it out about more people, you know, and I also think it's an opportunity to educate, like Louis was saying, and let people know this is coming. Make sure we're doing our outreach. And if the city can help us reach their, their, you know, population, it's our population too. And I think that will really help us.
What do we think about the the possibility of the generational digital divide? Having a being a barrier for many of our seniors to to take part. I know this is a, would be a citywide ask, but in looking at the actual stakeholders and the people that are going to be most affected, you know, when you have, I know some of the some of the maps we looked at, Paula, were showing the exact group we thought who were like the most the elderly women of color that are in, you know, like an O'Kirsty kind of area. And in thinking about what their access to technology is, even if they have access to it, if they even know, right? What what the heck to do with it? And so and then additionally to the seniors that are in the high rise communities now that are delegated mostly to their rooms because of COVID. It's like we have so many barriers here to get a great diverse data set. I completely agree with you, Louis, that it's, it's a very valuable tool by which to take the temperature of the city.
What about the focus? I mean, the city, that's a paper way that everybody, as far as I know, gets that. And we could have a rip out half page, you know, one page, rip it out and mail it to us, you know, go online if you can. But if you can't, you know, send it to us.
Is the timing.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to get stuff into the focus. It's prepared way ahead, so we just have to check on timing.
Bill has an answer.
Yeah, with we, if we had a, I don't know if we have a budget to do a mailing to that to everyone in the city. I don't know. That sounds like a lot of money as well. Just, just some thoughts.
Just a couple of points. If you, I encourage you to do a survey. That's the first thing. I think that's a great approach. Because the city can do, they do a really good job of assimilating information from the public and they've got a lot of contacts. And I think you'll be surprised at how much participation you get. If you're going to do it, you got to ask the right, the first question is, you got to ask is, do you want to see what we have now continue regardless of the cost?
That's right.
If you want to be honest about it, you got to ask that question and see what kind of response you get. Okay, you may not like it. It may be, well, we understand, you know, you've said you don't have enough money and we understand. But you got to ask that question. Okay. And the other is you got to ask some question in you, and these guys can help you do that to see whether everybody understands what they're being asked about.
Right.
And you will get, you're there questions that you can ask that will determine whether eighty percent of the people in the community don't know what you're talking about. You know, that you can, you can get a response from them, but you won't. But it'll tell you, he doesn't have any idea what we're asking, you know? So I encourage you to do that. I think it's, I think the information you get will be invaluable to help you make a decision. So anyway, that, but I encourage you to get the city involved quickly because there are people over there and there are firms that they work with that can help you structure these questions and structure the way this goes out and how it gets out.
I think that's, that's a great.
Three points, Bill.
And Maria, I've worried about the digital divide too. And, and, you know, we, we thought about a couple of possibilities and I just throw them out there. They're probably not very good. I haven't tried to do this before, right? So we're just sort of starting from ground zero. But one is that we could do a telephone blast and so that we could call people on the, just to alert them that the survey is out there. So if we can find a way that people can and take the survey, that we can make it available to them, we could notify them that that's available by by sending out a quick telephone blast, which is a pretty cheap way instead of a mailer. And which might actually work better for seniors than for many other people. I would never answer the telephone. I never do answer the telephone, you know. But and then the other would be that, you know, we could, I mean, the problem is, you know, you can't go to the the high rise because of COVID. And so I don't know how that works. You know, I was thinking you can, you can get it set up at the library so that if people who don't have access to the technology could come and we could make, you know, have a station at the library where people could go in and answer. I think COVID kind of makes all that out the window, so maybe that's just not going to work.
I know that, so with the lifelong Decatur Group, we have connections at all of the senior high rises. We did a bit of contacting at the beginning of COVID just to see what people needed. And so using our, some members of our neighborliness group, we were able to get out like things they wanted, like literally puzzles and, you know, face math, right? Or Sudoku books. But beyond that, the work that Leanne Harvey does with the Season of Giving work, she has additional contacts in all of those buildings. So I think that if an initial call went out to let those powers that be within those buildings, right? Be able to disseminate the information inside of there, then I think that it would be a lot more a lot more successful. It'd be a faster awareness capacity building within that community. So I think, I think we definitely have the the ability to make those connections. It's, you know, there, I'm sure there's some, we, the boomers are, there's some, some beyond boomers that are very tech savvy. But we want to make sure that we get them as well as the others. So I think that if the, say, Suzie, who runs Oliver House, says this is online or we have a copy of it, you know, do what you'd like. So I think that there's some, that kind of barrier could be, we could overcome that with some of our connections.
So we, I mean, we should, we should do what we can. It's, we have a challenge to put this together in a very short period of time. But, but I think it's worth doing.
If we, if we tried to have a paper copy, where would those funds come from?
I would assume.
Yeah, we don't have separated funds for this, so it would just have to come out of unspent balance.
Because I feel, I feel like those channels that Maria mentioned would be very helpful in notifying folks. But there still would be a significant number of people that wouldn't have, I mean, the la, the library is not even open, is it?
No, that's what my library was a bad idea. I agree.
And so I just wonder, you know, say, like Mary Wilson, you know, she, she does everything by hand. She's mailed out cards to, you know, Democrats, handwritten notes. She would need a paper copy. And so.
Well, then we should have paper copies. I mean, the cost seems like it would be as long as, my only concern about paper copies, I mean, I hear you all and I'm thinking it through. It seems like the only way to do it. Maybe we largely have electronic because it's just so much cheaper and easier to process and get out. But we also have paper copies that we distribute through the high rises and and whatever means. We have to make sure that we have the ability to process them. You know, that's a lot of work. How would that happen, David? Would we have to hire a firm to do it or what?
It depends. Bill mentioned there is the firm the city works with, so I'd be interested in kind of finding out how that works. But if not, we would just have to find the people. We can do it. If we do it through Survey Monkey, they have an option that you can manually enter data that's collected that way to combine it with the electronic data. So if we had to, we'd just find folks that could manually enter those if if that was one of the ways to do it.
Is it, is paper better than a telephone survey?
I do think there may be some options for telephone surveys, but it gets pretty complex like for people to understand what they're responding to unless it's an actual verbal person as opposed to an automated survey. So I think we'd have to definitely have professional help if we were going to do more of a telephone survey whereas actually like call center calling people.
David is, I'm wondering if we can put this on you and your communications staff to reach out to the city and find out what they can do. I think include Maria in the loop, if that's okay with you, Maria.
It is. I was also going to mention that there are some options that involve text messaging. And like for as basic as a flip phone, that I think like a jitterbug or whatever, right? Can receive text, but I don't know. I forgot who brought up the point of it. The ability for it to really be clear what you're answering yes or no to through that. So that would need to be investigated. But yeah, I'm.
That's, I mean, that, that, frankly, is where I think we're probably best served having professional help with this, right? Because it's not, it's not just the logistics of how we reach people. It's how you frame questions and it's all like all of that. And if you get it wrong, you just get garbage back on the survey. And so I think there's some value in probably getting some help with it.
Well, and what if we do this, I feel like there's maybe two levels of what we can do immediate, like in the very near term and kind of separate this out into two buckets. I think we definitely try to do a citywide survey. And then we realize that there are people who may not have access or be digitally connected. And we at a minimum, for those people, send them through the groups that we have through, you know, the networks that are available through Decatur, you know, the the Decatur groups that Maria is connected with and that others know about. And the senior, just the senior network that we already know exists. Mail not surveys that have to be returned and processed, but informational postcards that that give the highlights of what the plan is and inform that this is happening and give them direct them to how they can get further information.
But then go, you can go ahead and now talk.
I was gonna say, but, but, but they don't have, they wouldn't have an, some of them wouldn't have an opportunity to, you know, to lend their voice to as in the same way that the other folks would.
True, and I'm not saying abandon that idea, but I'm saying if we want to quickly do something in addition to, if we're able to do a survey, I'm, I'm just not sure how that will look yet because we don't, we don't know that. But I'm thinking more immediately, we can start to alert those people that this is happening through just through our, our networks that we know that our seniors are connected with. So not, not saying instead of, but in addition to, so that we can start, I guess, just informing people and educating people about what we're doing sooner.
So one thing that makes this a little different that I just want to put out there is that the survey results probably aren't just going to be viewed by the Decatur School Board or by this committee or even just the People Indicator. They're going to matter to the legislative delegation. And so we're going to have to really, really careful how we frame the whole thing. And it, it really can't be just a, hey, are you in favor of our current homestead exemption continuing? Like, there's going to have to be a clear explanation of and it's got to be concise, understanding, but it's got to be a, here's what we did. Here's what we thought it would do. Here's how much it's actually costing and explain, you know, the military increase, you know, services that have been cut. You know, the budget transfers from the reserves, like basically explain the impact on the district and how it's unsustainable. If we're, because otherwise, if you just ask him the question, do you want to continue this? You know, without context, a lot of people are going to say yes. And then the legislators will see that and say, well, fine, you know, school board, you want to do something, but your people want us to do, our voters want us to do this instead. So I think we've got to put it out there in a way to, that the voters can give an educated response. So because the legislators will go by that. And if the legislators see, oh, well, your voters actually want something different or understand the issue, they might be more inclined to actually do what the board wants. And then another thing to think about too, if we're the, the people who people who don't like something are more likely to communicate about it than people who are okay with something or, you know, lukewarm. And I mean, you know, not that many people are going to get really excited about whatever, you know, in favor of this homestead exemption change. Yeah, yeah, change it. But people are potentially going to disagree with it. And so those people are going to reach out to legislators. So I think that it's, I really like the idea of, you know, sending a heads up, hey, this is coming your way. Look for it kind of thing. But we've got to make sure to to follow that up and communicate with, I guess, make sure that the legislators are getting communication from more than people who are in disagreement with changing the exemption.
That's a great point. And part of it goes to Hans' point about how you write these questions makes a huge difference. And so we have to, we have to get that right. And we need to get started on it now. And if we can get professional help, we should because because, because we have to get it right. So I would suggest that we, so if David and Maria can try to work on the logistics of the survey or David and your communications team, but if we can try to get answers and really kind of have a plan, you know, with like next week, so that we can figure out how we can execute. And then we need a separate effort to actually begin, and maybe this begins by seeing if we can get the professional help to help draft the survey questions. But obviously, there's going to be, we're going to need to provide content because whatever consulting firm isn't going to be able to do that on its own. And maybe that can be a parallel effort so that we can have some folks working on survey questions while other folks are working on logistics of getting a survey. The other things that I, I just to, you know, rattle it off, the survey questions is one thing, and then the, the accompanying information is another. And we could, you know, begin, I think we already have information up on, you know, like a repository on the website where you can get the information. So I think what's needed is to update the Q and A. I like, I tend to like the Q and A format. Maybe there's a better format. But basically, we need materials that would be distributed along with the survey, but wouldn't even need to wait for the survey. You know, we could, we could go ahead and start putting out information about what we're doing in some form that people can digest. We have a lot of that already, but it needs to be updated and improved, I think.
The other thing, great ideas. Who's, I got the note about reaching out to the city about the survey logistics and that Maria is willing to help with that. Who's working on those other pieces, like the actual content of the survey and things?
Nobody yet. To be determined. I thought I'd circle back to it just after the, in terms of the other pieces that it seems like we need to be thinking about. So we will do a survey. We're going to have to process the survey results and put it together in some form. Hopefully, this consulting firm can help us do that. But I also think we probably should have at least one listening session after the survey results are back and after we have something of a, I mean, again, you really don't want to go out with a fully baked proposal, really ideally, you've got some flexibility to adjust what you're doing based on what you hear. I don't know how to handle that right now. And so maybe what we do instead is just go out with the fully baked proposal. But I think we need a listening session. And maybe we should just, we could talk about the format, you know. As a rule, I hate the format where you just give people a microphone and let them make a speech because you get angry people looking to stir up a crowd. And the commentary tends not to be very well informed. It's not very instructive to what we're doing. In every case that I can think of, the more successful type sessions are more of a an open house where you invite people to come in, you try to engage people in conversation. You have knowledgeable people sitting at tables. You invite small groups to come in and talk. To me, that's a much more, much better format and it tends to provide better exchange of information and less grandstanding. I don't know if this is appropriate for that or not, but I tend to think it would be. But I'll just throw it out there. Is there, y'all agree that we need some kind of an event? And if it's an event, do you think that people really want the microphone kind of event or do you think a work, an open house type? What do y'all call it? Like, what do you call them? Do you have a name for that, David? It's the kind of thing cooperative strategies does.
I would, I would call that an open house, like where we have the information up around for people to look at it. We converse with people and kind of get the feelings that I would call that an open house.
I would propose that we do an open house, but what are the thoughts?
I was just wondering, is it safe to do an open house?
Well, that's a good question. No, it's probably not safe.
I know my parents are not even leaving the house, you know, even if it was a situation.
I know my parents are not even leaving the house, you know, even if it was a situation of a small group. And then if we think about doing a Zoom listening session, then that goes back to the digital divide.
Tashi, you can actually access Zoom through a regular phone. If you just get, say, calling this number and then punch in this login. Just participate and you can then break them out into smaller groups for discussion. So that, that's an op, that would be an option.
You can.
I think, I think, I think that sounds like a good option. I mean, I think, I think presenting this in a way that in multiple different ways via the survey and a listening session. At least gives all of these options to people to engage the way that they need to. And that's essentially, sometimes people don't, there are some people in the community don't necessarily want to engage, they just wanna know they were invited. They just wanna know they were included. And so if we, if we're, if we are being very intentional about how we present the information. Even if we do it through a flyer, a postcard, text message, you know, voicemail on the survey. You know, at least they're being inundated with this information in, in all types of ways. And that is encouraging people to know that we do in fact want their, want their input.
This past week I facilitated a, a round three of the strategic planning process for, for a group. And because the city is trying to wrap that up, I don't know how many of the rest of you might have done so last week. But that, that might be a bank of skilled facilitators who would be willing to do a small group. And then kind of pull it all back together. They need to have a guide for sure, because that keeps everybody consistent. But that might be an option also, and a, and a group of people who already understand how to. Lead a positive discussion on something. So that's just a thought.
Was that done by Zoom?
Yes.
Oh, that's, I like that idea. Good. The other pieces, and the only reason I'm rushing is that we have 15 minutes. But the other pieces are that I think that we should, we should, just in terms of the amount of work that needs to be done. We're gonna do all this comment, I think we owe it to the people we're seeking input from to respond. And so I think that we should have a, basically a response to comments. Where we group the major categories of comments that we received. And say, here's, here's what we've done with that input. We've either accepted it and reflected in the proposal. Or we, you know, hear you, but we couldn't accept, you know, that that doesn't work for us and here's why. But just, just to speak back so that people know that we're making rational decisions and actually listening. I think that that would go a long way, but it's also a lot of work. So I just wanted to mention that before we go back and talk about who can do what. The, the first, and we don't need to plan all of this out now. But if we're agreed about a survey, we've talked about the logistics of the survey, we need to talk about the content. And who, who would like to raise their hand to engage with our consultant? Is that a hand raising there, Hans?
I'm the data guy. I'm not sure you want me to be the communications guy. Might blow the whole thing up.
All right, I couldn't, I actually thought that you were raising your hand, I couldn't though. But, but do we have volunteers to work on the communications piece?
Of the folks we have here, so Gwen's got her hands full with the first round of the report. Hans is the data, data guy. That kind of leaves Maria and I as the only two other, well, and Bill Floyd, but I don't know that we're gonna be able to do that. He, he might laugh at us and say he doesn't write survey questions.
It's gonna be a lot of translating. I mean, honestly, Hans, we're gonna need your, we're gonna need to confirm the language with you. To make sure when you have like the 1,000 word statement, that our five words that we use to explain it are correct. So we're gonna, we're gonna, it's gonna be a little bit of translating, but we will definitely still need you. To make sure that the, the translation is the correct one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally, totally up for volunteering to assist. I, I am probably the wrong person to lead that effort. That's my, my whole point. Unless, I mean, unless we wanna set this up to fail.
Well, and, and y'all can pull some from the, I mean, the report is, it's a draft. I mean, it's a messy draft right now, but you're welcome to pull from some of it if you want for narrative purposes. And then condense it to what you need, if that's helpful.
And I think the visuals that we already have and the slides that we presented to you all, help tell the story for sure.
I agree, those are good. And David, I assume that we can ask Courtney or Andrew Sarah to do double duty on this and to lend a hand on the. Questions, you know, the content.
Yeah, 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 definitely. Courtney's listening in for exactly that reason.
Thank you, Courtney.
And, and Phil Cuffey's been trying to get his way into this meeting and has not successfully so far. So all he's asking is that I make sure that everybody know that he'll offer up the Beacon Hill group as a way to help get the survey out.
I like Gwen's idea that she was mentioning just to, to make sure that we are framing up the questions properly. I think it's, like, many people will not read a separate FAQ. If we say, here's a link to the FAQ, please read that before you take the survey. I doubt they will. I think we need to kind of bake it in to the survey to make it both educate and get valuable input. And then I wonder, are we, are we talking about having an open ended box at the end for, for comments? Or are we not? Like, are we seeking open ended input there? I couldn't tell where we were headed.
Say, as long as we have someone who's gonna analyze it, I, I don't like to provide feedback or get input that I'm not gonna look at. So make sure that we arrange for that, cause that's the time consuming part.
If we, if we have an open ended box, we should have a word limit in it so that there's, you know, you get 150 characters. I'm serious. We, people, you should see the emails that people write to us. I'm like, you want me to read that? You know, if we, but if it's a limited number of characters and, and, you know, I think that it can be profitable. If it's too much, we're not gonna read any of it.
Yeah, I was thinking back at what, what we did when we did the redistricting, cause we did have a box and we did get in comments. And then we did what Louis was suggesting, we responded as kind of, we got a lot of questions about this. Here's a general, here's a, here's an answer to that general group of questions. Like, I just wondered if it would be valuable. I mean, we are getting emails. And I get David's point about, do we have the bandwidth to analyze it? And that's a very good point, cause we could get, you know, thousands of responses. At least we hope to.
And we'd be fortunate to get thousands of responses, absolutely. From all the surveys that I've run in my professional career, I try to stick with something that's either a binary or has a fixed answer. Because the analysis part can become quite a headache. But you're wanting people to feel heard, then you can't just, I don't think you can just box them into the questions that you had. That they ought to be able to state something. I, I like your idea, Louis, though, of limiting the characters just so that they have to be pithy.
Right. I, I think the fundamental reason why we have to have a box that is character limited is because we're guessing what people don't understand. And, and those questions will give us a crystal clear view into what they don't understand. And that'll help us frame the second round of communication.
So the next que, that, I think those are good suggestions. The, with eight minutes left before seven, I'm wondering, in terms of the, the date of the listening session. You know, I, I would think, you know, we're talking about doing the survey. I think the listening session would be more profitable following, you know, our analysis of the results. And so I would, I would think that we'd be looking for something. You know, it's end of October. We can't go much later than that, but also it seems unlikely that we've been able to develop and execute and analyze a survey. Before then, but maybe it's okay. What, do you think that's too early? It'd be nice, like at the October 13 board meeting, if we said we are going to have a listening session. Look, you know, start publicizing that we're going to do it. And so I'd like to be able to set the date.
We definitely should set a date sooner rather than later, because we are gonna, it's gonna be a real lift to get people notified about it. So. I also think it depends on everybody jumping in and, and moving this forward quickly. There's a lot of moving pieces here.
Can we do a quick review of the total timeline and like work our way back so we can see what that looks like?
Basically, the General Assembly, the session begins. And I never know exactly when, there's some formula, but it's basically the first week or the second week in January. It's like, it's like calculating Easter, you look at the phase in the moon or some silly thing like that. Anyway, so we, the, the general thought had been that we would need to begin sort of socializing. What our proposal with the delegation this fall. You know, we're, we're, we're gonna do that, as we've discussed. We have a, a lot of socializing to do. We have, it's a, you know, so we, we've begun trying to talk to our representatives about it already, even without a proposal in hand. Ordinarily, you would want to have the proposal, you know, baked and ready to be dropped early. And so my. You know, thought had been, you know, ideally, we're gonna be in a position to have everything in legislative language that we can. And that we've got a sponsor for, that we can have ready to go by the, you know, by December, by, not by December 1, but by the middle or end of December. So that it'd be ready to be dropped early. Doesn't have to happen that way. I mean, they could, you know, you can draw, introduce legislation after the session begins. And so it's, we don't really have a drop dead date, but it becomes much, much, much harder. Like the legislators wants the session began. And so if you wanna get their time, the reason it's do it the fall is that they've got time to talk to you. And it's easier to talk to them about something if you have something specific. I mean, it is what it is. I think at this point, we know basically what we need to talk to them about. And so we're, we're gonna start doing that. Does that give you enough? But so if we, you know, if we, if we had a. Listening session by. The end of October, I would feel pretty good that we could listen and respond and sort of come out with something. I mean, November is gonna be a busy month if the world doesn't end. But, but honestly, the election's gonna be a giant distraction. At least for some of us. And then, and then you've got holidays and, and back to school. I mean, it just is gonna get nuts.
We need to vote on this at one of our board meetings, so.
You're right, we have to be able to vote by the December meeting.
I would actually almost say, let's target being able to vote on the November meeting, because inevitably there are some delays. And I feel uncomfortable targeting voting at the December meeting, cause then we're in mid-December. And basically, we're in the holidays and then boom, the legislative season starts and we haven't even. I, I would, I would hesitate to approach it that way and, and. Not have vetted it with our legislators before the start of the legislative season, if we can make that happen.
If I could ask a quick question, just for clarity, I suspect I know the answer to this, but what you vote on, does that have to be in final legislative language? Or voting, okay.
I mean, we need to have a resolution where we're in support of something that we're gonna ask.
Yeah, we'll have to have, I think what we did last time, we did have a formal resolution written by the attorneys. In order to take that to the legislature, I believe. So we will have to have a little time to do that, but most of that could happen in parallel.
And only what happens, so you get a sponsor for your bill, the sponsor will take it and they'll give it to the, to the, to the General Assembly. And then there's legislative council that takes whatever you've done, which is never quite right, and they put it in legislative language.
But so when should we be drafting that? Right? I mean, I think that that helps, that's also something that we ought to be working on. What, what, basically, what is it that you need for the November meeting to vote on? And then we can kind of back, like, whatever gaps that we have now, we need to get those into place for you.
We'll need, we'll need a resolution, excuse me, a resolution that basically describes the content of what it is that we want. In some kind of English that people can understand. So the specifics of that, in other words, the legislative language, how to write that in form that the General Assembly passes can be worked out later. And so we can just have a plain English paragraph that says that we're gonna have two separate exemptions, one for people aged 65 to 69. That's of this value with these income limits, and then a second exemption from, just the way that we're discussing it now. We just need to plug that into something reasonably clear English that would be in the form of a resolution.
And for the actual, for the actual legislation too, there's the legal ad component, just as a reminder, that has to be put in. So we'll have to work on, on that along with the legislator.
So it sounds like with Heather's timeline, and I think Heather's right, as uncomfortable as it is, that we need to target a vote. On those specifics by the November meeting. I think you're right. And to do that, let's, I suggest we target that listening session for the last week in August sometime. Kind of like seven days before, like August 23rd, I'm not looking at a calendar. You think that's ridiculous, Paula? October, something like October 23rd or something like that.
If we go back to August, we could really work this out. That, that could work.
And then if, if that works, let's, let's plan on that and let's crystallize the plans over the next week. Meanwhile, David and Maria are gonna reach out on logistics. Paula and Maria, in consultation with Hans. Are gonna start thinking about the content of the survey. And we, David, another to do for you is to, when you reach out to the city, to try to get a consultant on board. Who can help us draft the survey as well as figure out the logistics of doing it. Once we get that consulting on board, we'll put them in touch with Paula and Maria. The one other thing is. The Q and A, and I guess this is a query to Paula and Maria. Does it make sense to lump that task in together with the survey? That it's kind of hard to separate the two. In other words, you've got an informational piece that would be standalone. And would go up on the website as soon as we get it done. Q and A, FAQ. Whatever, you know, whatever it is. Then you've also got the specific drafting of the questions. Do y'all wanna take both of those on, or do you wanna take only the survey questions and we need a different group working on the FAQ thing?
There may be a way to actually blend the two. So that there's a paragraph about, there's a question in a paragraph, so there's information. And then there's, and then there's a survey question. So we're, we're educating them in bytes as opposed to.
Right.
I agree with Heather completely, trying to get anybody, one of my favorite questions to ask in any public forum is. Show of hands, how many of you have read the strategic plan for the city, right? Because, and there's five hands that go up out of 500 people and you go, okay, well, thank you, at least we know you didn't read it. The, I think that we can frame it so that we're giving them a nugget of information and then asking a question. We just need to be very careful about, about survey bias. I, any professional can help us trim and edit the, the, the actual question so that we don't throw bias in. But I, I think that might be an easier way for us to do this, is to give them, again, being as pithy as we can be. But here, here's, here's something you should know. Now, based having that knowledge in your hand, how do you feel about this thing? So I think that might be an easier way to do this. So it kind of gets all done at one time.
That appeals to me. So, and that also means that we don't need another team of people working on things. Which means, but I think that we've done what we need to do today, and I think that we have the tasks assigned. But i- is there anything that I've missed in, in my little list? Okay. Thanks so much for, for all that y'all are doing to help out. And I know that it's a big imposition, I mean, there's just no way around it, but we really appreciate, it's important, I think, to a lot of people in our community. And we appreciate that you're here to help. So, thank you so much. And by assigning all these tasks, I don't mean that, that I'm unwilling or not ready to help with anything. I am, I just don't wanna wind up being overcommitted, not being able to help. But please reach out as needed. You know, you know, just if you have a question or need anything, just, just holler and we'll, we'll get you the help we need. Whether it's individually or get, or more resources from the central office.
And I, I echo the thanks, Louis. It's been awesome working with Hans and somebody who actually understands all of this stuff. And we can kind of bump heads a little bit or like, you know, throw different things at each other. And it's just been really nice having that perspective. I, I just really appreciate it. And I know there's lots on the committee who have been doing that behind the scenes as well, so.
Yeah, I wanna reiterate that too. Thank you all. We know you've stepped up to do this, you're not paid to do this, you're doing this to. Yeah, I wanna reiterate that too. Thank you all. Um, we know you've stepped up to do this. You're not paid to do this. You're doing this to really help our community, and, and we appreciate you very, very much in all your efforts. Um, I wanna also say that I, I'm available and would be very happy to, you know, if there's a, just if you need a sounding board or hey, read through this draft, or hey, read through these questions. I mean, maybe even the whole board could do that, um, just to, to vet things with us if you will, you know, if that's helpful before we push it out to the community. I'm more than happy to, to do that. We've been working on this as a board for, for a couple of years now, so I think we all have some context and we're happy to, to, you know, help with that as well. So.
Yeah, thank you very much. And like Heather said, if you guys need anything, make sure you reach out to, um, Heather and Louis.
That was, that was awesome. I love it.
All right.
Well done, Tasha.
And the fact that you could do it with a straight face was even better.
That was awesome.
It's five past seven, so let's go get our dinner. Thanks, everyone, and y'all have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.
Thanks, Shayna.
You're welcome, everybody.